All right, welcome everybody to the September 7th meeting of council committees. We'll begin with the roll call of members. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Roy.
Here.
Ms. Baker.
Here.
Ms. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Diaz. Mr. Garcia Molina. Mr. Soto.
Here.
And President Smith Waddell.
Here.
All right, we'll begin with the Community Planning Committee. Counselor Craig. No, I'm sorry, I skipped over the minutes. I will hear a motion to approve the August 2nd meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Council comments on the minutes. Okay, hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Roy.
Aye.
Ms. Baker.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith Waddell.
Aye, I neglected to mention at the roll call of members that counselors Garcia Molina and Diaz are excused. We now go to the Community Planning Committee. Counselor Craig.
Thank you, Council President. We have one item on the agenda, and that is a discussion of the lead hazard ordinance that I believe Chris and Rebecca are here to present. And then I will finally open that up.
I appreciate it.
Hello?
Hello. Thank you, Counselor Craig. Can you hear me?
I can.
Remember, can you hear me also? No.
Something's on the microphone.
Okay.
Better.
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 Okay. Thank you very much. Take two, I'll kick us off tonight. Thank you, Counselor Craig. And good evening, city councilors. We are very pleased to present a preliminary legislative concept to you tonight, which reflects a core priority of the department and of the administration, namely safe, healthy housing, particularly for our low to moderate income renters here in the city. The legislative concept has a few related parts and aims to achieve stronger lead safety protections and more effective and consistent rental housing operations with respect to rental licensing, housing inspections, and tenant applications. Our desire tonight is to share our latest thinking, socialize key ideas, and begin a process. That process will continue over the next two months, in which we will review questions and concerns about the proposed legislative changes. And following those steps, we will draft language and will present a set of amended ordinances to council probably sometime in November. In January 2021, just to give a little historical context, recent history, thanks to the support from the mayor and from you, City Council, we made organizational changes to the department and began to build the capacity of three bureaus within the department. The Health Bureau, the Housing Inspections Bureau, and the Lead Safety and Community Development Bureau. We recruited and hired a deputy director of health, housing, and community development, Ms. Rebecca Geiser. And her main role is to manage these three important bureaus and to integrate and elevate the work and objectives of those programs. Ms. Rebecca Geiser came onboard in April and has made great progress in a number of areas. She will be presenting the proposal, the legislative proposal, tonight on behalf of the administration. And afterwards, Rebecca and I will collect any initial questions you may have for additional research and analysis. There are a number of different elements to what we'll be presenting tonight, so we think this is going to take a little bit of time, both to get through the material tonight, but then ultimately to answer questions, really receive the questions first, and then answer the questions over the next couple of months. So with that, I'm going to turn it over for the substance of the presentation to Rebecca.
Thank you, Council, and thank you for your commitment to housing safety over the course of the past many years. And it's exciting to be a part of this initiative now, building on the long history that you all have had here. So I really appreciate the opportunity. So to start with the outline of the presentation, we are going to outline the proposed changes related to the rental ordinances. And as Mr. Delft stated, these are significant legislative changes. So we're proposing a little bit of a different process to present the concept to you today, and then allow time for research, further research, further process, soliciting feedback from you, from the community, and then providing answers to questions prior to bringing the draft ordinance, as Mr. Delft said. So just recognizing the complexity of the many different moving parts here. And so tonight, we'll propose an outline of how we'll engage you and the stakeholders in sort of questions and answers, and provide education. And as we're seeking your feedback early on in the process, we welcome your questions as we go along. And we anticipate some complex, difficult questions. We know that this will probably breed a lot of conversation, and we appreciate the opportunity to engage as we go along. So please do note your questions, and we'll continue to answer those over the next couple of months. And we're presenting these three legislative changes together because they fit together not only legislatively, but also administratively, and revolve around the rental property ordinance that was initially passed in 2009, and then again amended in 2018. So these are, some of these changes really hinge on the rental property licensing ordinance. So as Chris mentioned, this is the organizational chart, and this is the division or the Bureau of Health, the Bureau of Property Maintenance and Housing Inspections, and the Bureau of Lead Safety and Community Development. And really, these ordinances, proposed changes encompass all three of those bureaus and work within those three bureaus that we do on an ongoing basis. And we've continued in our department to work with the mayor on her priority for safe and equitable housing. And these three bureaus are really working towards this goal on a daily basis. So to kind of paint the picture of where we are, we have 22,092 total households in the city of Lancaster, and approximately 89% of them were built prior to 1978, which means that they were built with lead paint. Very likely, we can assume that there were lead paint in those properties. And approximately 10,700 households, which is 54.4%, are living in rental units built prior to 1978. So that gives us a context of the scope of the rental properties and the households in those rental properties. As the Bureau of Housing Inspections and Property Maintenance, we aim to systematically inspect all rental properties every four years, plus many more touches throughout the community as we respond to complaint-based complaints through complaint-based inspections. So a rationale, we have a few main goals, and this, really, we began to discuss these changes because we continue to see the effects of lead poisoning in our children in the city of Lancaster. And we recognize the opportunity in our bureaus, in our division, to continue to improve the quality of our housing stock through housing inspections, and strive toward non-discriminatory rental application processes as well. And all of these, again, are related to the rental property ordinance. So first, for the changes to Chapter 182 of the City Code Lead Poisoning Prevention and Lead Hazard Control. I know that you have, those of you who have been around for several years have heard the many times about the dangers of exposure to lead-based paint. So just to recap for the public and for you all, as we begin to revisit this topic, there's no safe level of lead exposure in children. And exposure to lead can seriously harm a child's health and causes permanent lifelong damage. And these health effects are not reversible, and there is no cure. So once a child is exposed, there is no turning back. And some of the adverse effects of lead poisoning are listed on this slide in specific. Responding to cases of children with elevated blood lead levels cannot be the primary way that we address lead poisoning. We do, we are working to get those referrals, every single one from the state, and respond accordingly for the children. But we have to take a proactive and an expanded approach to ensure the safety of those kids on a regular basis. So here are some statistics about lead poisoning in the city of Lancaster from the Surveillance Report on Childhood Lead Poisoning in PA. Over 8% of the children tested are confirmed to have an elevated blood lead level greater than five micrograms per deciliter, which is the CDC definition of lead poisoning. And only a fraction of the children are tested for blood lead levels. And so we're really only getting reports of a fraction of cases that are actually have lead poisoning in the city. Black and Latinx children are two to three times more likely to have an elevated blood lead level compared to white children in the city. So this really has wide-reaching implications for our kids and for our city into the future. So what are we currently doing to prevent childhood lead poisoning? Our response is really multifaceted, including educating the community, mitigating lead hazards, and housing revitalization projects. As you may have read in the newspaper on Sunday about our lead program, if you haven't seen it, invite you to look that up on LMP, fantastic article about our work with housing revitalization. And then, again, as I mentioned, through the Health Bureau, responding to children with elevated blood lead levels. So the main part of this presentation is the fourth pillar of the response, which is proactive policy development that promotes safe and healthy housing. So already, we're working in all four of these spheres, but this is one of the points. So here is the summary of the primary proposed changes to this particular chapter, the lead ordinance. First, we are proposing to expand the Lead Safe Certification requirements across the city. Currently, we require rental properties built prior to 1978 who have children six and under living or frequently visiting maintain Lead Safe Certification, and we are proposing that we expand that requirement to all rental properties. Currently, we do not require daycare centers and facilities to maintain Lead Safe Certification on an ongoing basis. So we are proposing that all 68 daycare centers and facilities maintain that Lead Safe Certification. And thirdly, requiring all Lancaster City Housing Authority properties to maintain Lead Safe Certification. We have been working very closely with the executive director of Lancaster City Housing Authority, both on the logistics and on the programmatic support we can offer to LCHA as the implementation goes on. And so she and we, as well as LGH and their lead program, have been working together to figure out community response to the LCHA properties. And then the second, the second area that we would like to strengthen is the elevated blood lead level case response. Currently, the landlords are required to get an environmental investigation within 21 days of receiving notification that the child has an elevated blood lead level. And we do not go back to check that for another 21 days. Meanwhile, the child is being further exposed, and the more that they are exposed, the higher their blood lead levels can get in the meantime. And we've seen this to be also very dangerous for children who are undergoing chelation therapy for high blood lead levels, because as their body gets rid of the lead that is already there, if they're continually exposed, they continue to have even more negative effects. So the proposal is that we will automatically perform or order an environmental investigations for all children with elevated blood lead levels as the city. And secondly, we are proposing that we give health officers the explicit authority to condemn a property as unsafe for the children six and under with a documented EBLL and proof of lead during an environmental investigation, which would mean those children need to move out so that they are no longer exposed to that lead and meet as quickly as possible. And the second part of this proposal is for non-discriminatory rental application process. City Council Presidents with Waddell has requested an ordinance incorporating the following requirements into the Human Relations Ordinance and/or Chapter 238 of the City Code, which is rental property. And there are three components to this proposal, creating systems for unified review of applications, and providing method for applicants to ask for their application to be reconsidered if they have been denied. The second component is ensuring all appropriate income is considered, which it is not necessarily currently. And thirdly, ensuring that any inappropriate eviction proceedings, particularly related to loss of a job and COVID, are not held against applicants into the future. So I'd like to turn it over to President Smith Waddell, if you'd like to add anything else to this discussion at this point.
Yeah, thank you, Rebecca. I'll just briefly contextualize for members of council and for the associated public what it is we're talking about here and what my motivation was in requesting this of the administration. As we've discussed up here a number of times, frequently, we find ourselves asking, why are, say, developers and landlords not making further strides to provide for affordable, safe, quality housing? And part of that, I think, that we have to acknowledge is that we don't yet have the legal structure that provides for both landlords and tenants in that way. In this, in this specific case, I want to, you know, turn your attention really to the latter two of the three items. That is, first of all, ensuring all appropriate income is considered, which would include spousal support, social security, disability, income, veteran benefits. You know, any of those things really that, you know, contribute to a person's whole income ought to be part of, I believe, ought to be part of the calculation of a renter's income, and indeed, a number of forms of exclusion, I would argue. Hey, Mayor. I guess we'll have her on the other side. I would argue are tantamount to discrimination of certain classes of people. The other is really this. Oftentimes, you know, in from my experience as a landlord and conversing with other landlords, I know that the background checks run on tenants often merely show that an eviction was filed. They don't show the conditions under which it was filed, and they don't show the results. And speaking with a number of people who have come to me seeking assistance, either with my council hat on or with the homelessness coalition hat on, those evictions can haunt them for a number of years. And the, not to put too fine, not to put too fine a point on it, but if we're not taking more action, I feel, to protect our tenants and affirmatively further affordable housing, just based on the demographics of race and income in this city, we are going to either create a mass exodus or a permanent underclass. And I think that in the moment that we are in, neither of those things are responsible, considering the powers and the situation that we have before us. And once the team from CPED wraps up their presentation, I hope and am happy to engage in more conversation with council, and in fact, I hope to set the tone for us having more, I am not talking into the microphone, my apologies, to set the tone for us having more discussions on issues in front of the public before an actual ordinance comes before us. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could just follow that point, and I apologize for being late, and I'm also going to apologize in advance for leaving early, I have a family commitment that's going to take me out at seven. I just want to put a pin in the last point that you made, Council President. The two significant pieces of work are coming before council tonight, both this and then also Director Campbell is going to follow with another proposed change that we are bringing to council for engagement and feedback. And I just, it has been a very trying time. I think there's been several new council members who have joined council, and then COVID hit. And so as we are embarking on these next three months, I just want to acknowledge that this is how council is supposed to function. Bringing issues to council, you're providing feedback, it is transparent, the process is engaging the public, it is shaping legislation that is going to effectuate change in where you live and as, and in terms of how we utilize a public asset, which is our streets. And so I just want to acknowledge that the work between now and the end of the year is going to ramp up considerably with these two pieces of legislation, the conversations we're having about the American Rescue Plan Act, as well as the budget, and that I'm really looking forward to this measure of work that is really future-focused, less focused on pandemic, although obviously, we're still in it, and really about shaping the kind of city that we want to be in, and for you to have your imprimatur in that process. So thank you, Council President. Thank you for bringing forward the nondiscrimination aspects of the work that we're embarking on in this conversation, and let's go.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So wrapping up into the previous two points of the proposed changes that we have for this evening is, they're all wrapping into this Chapter 238 of the City Code, the rental property. And in order to administratively meet the demands of the lead ordinance changes, we are proposing to move from a one-year rental license to a two-year rental license, starting in 2023. This will benefit landlords, so they don't have to renew every single year. And also, that renewal price, the renewal process will come in line with the Lead Safe Certification, which is also good for two years. And then we're looking to authorize the development of policies and procedures to assure that the rental properties are regularly scheduled for systematic inspections and widen the length of time, giving us the ability to have an inspection no more frequently, a systematic inspection, I should say, not complaint-based, but a systematic inspection, no more frequently than once every two years, and no less frequently than once every six years. And then put in place policies and procedures whereby we can address properties that have many violations more frequently than those that have fewer violations. And then we would incorporate the lead hazard control changes that impact this rental property ordinance, and incorporate the non-discriminatory rental application process requirements into this chapter as well. So through this process, we are proposing the next steps. We are working now to develop public education materials throughout the month of September. Those include frequently asked questions, posting on social media, and with you this evening, receiving initial questions, concerns from council, and then being able to start really responding to those in earnest. So starting on September 15th, engaging in stakeholder education and input, that includes council and stakeholders in the community, we will have an Engage Lancaster platform whereby people can provide input and ask questions about the changes that are being proposed. And then prior to the ordinance being drafted, we will address the community and stakeholder concerns, either through changes to the proposal or by answering questions and by putting out the information and education that's needed so that everyone is on the same page prior to the final ordinance development, which will be the last two weeks in October. And currently, our timeline proposal is that we will bring this to city council for the first reading on November the 9th, and the second reading and the vote on November the 23rd, if all goes as planned right now.
If I may, just to add to that, I just want to thank Chris and Rebecca, the lead team, as well as our solicitor, for working through the myriad of issues. This was definitely like peeling an onion. I also just want to underscore that between the HUD funding that we have received and the work that we are doing as part of that program, as well as Penn Medicine, LGH's investment of $50 million over the next 10 years to eliminate lead poisoning in the county, this is, this is where we are making our mark. And I am so proud of the work that our team has been doing, and that this is an opportunity for council to put an even finer point on our commitment to this that goes beyond the programmatic and administrative to the law of the city of Lancaster as it pertains to the safety and welfare of our youngest residents and their ability to learn and grow. So I'm really excited about moving this conversation forward. I know that there will be a lot of questions from our stakeholder groups, and we've done a pretty good job so far of outlining who they are, I mean, obviously landlords, but also daycare centers and other partners in the community that we want to be in communication with and addressing their concerns. And we feel like this is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to make something right that we've known about for more than 50 years.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
So I can also point you, I handed you this chart. This is the chart of the lead ordinance changes, what the current ordinance says and what the proposed change is, in a little bit more detail than what I presented. So you do have that in front of you. And appreciate your questions and your thoughts and your comments. We'll be writing them all down and taking them, if we can answer them, we will. And also know that there will be some that are going to be big overarching questions that we will be sure to take back and research and get thorough answers to you and to the wider community as we move along in the next couple of months.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Craig. Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, thank you to the CPED team. The, a lot of the leadership in CPED is fairly new to their positions in the city. And I know that you all are really hitting the ground running and doing some impressive work while dealing with staffing challenges and sort of the generalized end of the world that we're all facing. So that's really very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Yeah. Also, if, are you comfortable with us sharing this? I just know that we have at least one member of the press, as it were, in the House. I don't know if you have additional copies.
Yes, no problem.
Great. Well, then, one for Mr. Stuldrer and anywhere else that it might go. I think I do want to hear go. I think I do want to hear where, where, where and how council thinks about these things. But if I can briefly contextualize a little bit more, I think that what the mayor said can't be driven home strongly enough. There are tens of millions of dollars that exist in our community to ensure that our children live in safe places. Indeed, millions of dollars have been invested already and continue to be available to landlords and property owners. And with, with this much assistance out in the community, and with what we know about the deleterious effects of lead, I don't, I don't want to come down too hard on anybody, but it begins to become a question of a property owner's responsibility and our responsibility as, as a legislative body if we're not doing everything we can to make sure that lead is remediated and abated in the city of Lancaster. Humor me. I'll, I'll tell you a story. About four months ago, a woman called into one of our digital city council meetings, I think that was back in May, and she had a complaint about one thing, but we ended up talking after the meeting about her housing situation. And what I found was that she lives with her four children in an apartment that none of us would, would consider fit for a regular human habitation. And, you know, despite that, her landlord has accepted CARES Act money while, on, on her behalf, while not, you know, really effectively providing her with a place to live. And now that that CARES Act money has ran out, was, was seeking at that time to move her out and move a new tenant in. Now, she works a job and a half, 60 hours a week, and it's, it's been two and a half months that she's been looking, and she still cannot find an apartment that will accept her and her four children because of an eviction that she got four, maybe five years ago, because she wasn't able to show up for a court date because she was fleeing domestic violence. And, and so the way that I look about, look at that is that abuse made her homeless at that time, and indeed, it's, it's making her homeless again. And if we can do anything to prevent situations like that, and to provide for like the hardworking families that live in Lancaster, to ensure that as our economic engine, they have a home base from which to do that work, we should be doing whatever that is. That's, that is the, oh, what have you. That's sort of my motivation in bringing this forward, and I look forward to a thorough discussion here and in the future. I don't want anybody to feel like they have to have all their questions right now, because as our wonderful CPED team did mention, this will be an ongoing process, and there will be time for questions and ideas moving forward. But just want to open it up on that note, and thank you, Counselor Craig, for your forbearance.
Absolutely. Council President, I do, not necessarily, necessarily a concern, but, so how, how, how do we put these things in place and get the landlords to comply? And are there, I mean, I'm assuming we're going to need manpower in order to get the landlords to comply if they don't? And do we have enough manpower to do so?
Yeah, I think that's, that's an excellent question. And I know that's one that our CPED team will take very seriously. I know they're, they're stretched thin right now. But I think that we're going to find this all over the community as we're talking about these changes or any organization, city, county, or any organization that our funds might flow to. Anything that they want to do by way of these programs is going to require some, some additional staffing, I think, to do it. Otherwise, almost any program over and above what's already being done is, is going to fail. So I think that's a really strong point. And I think that it's self evident that, you know, when we have these requirements or, you know, proposals, we need to approach them strategically and with the, with the proposed staff in mind. I think that that's also part of what we're looking at in terms of changing the, the frequency with which we do rental housing inspections and licensing, making sure that we know where we need to focus additional manpower and what landlords and property owners, we know through evidence that we can inspect them a little less frequently to make sure that our person power is deployed in the most effective place. But that's well taken, Counselor Craig.
Sounds good. Our children are our most precious commodity. And anything that we can do to assure a brighter future for them, I'm sure is something that everybody's going to work hard to do. I don't have any other questions for the moment, but I might have something brewing.
Counselor Craig, your question goes to the heart of what we've been wrestling with, because ultimately, whatever we end up passing, we will have to operationalize. That is another reason why the timing of this ordinance, of the legislative change is important, because we will be coming up on the, the city budget in November. That said, we actually do have some resources already in the budget that, or that were in the budget in the past, for example, that we're not fully using. So in 2021, we actually had to put one inspector position essentially on hold outside of the budget because of COVID-related financial challenges. But that, that position has always remained one of the inspectors, and we do know that we're going to need at least one additional lead inspector to fulfill some of the things that we outlined today. Fortunately, that, that position was there in the past. We would have to bring it back in 2022, as we always anticipated. Now, depending on what we ultimately pass in the way of new legislation, I think we're really going to have to drill down and make some of those resource decisions. But we have been thinking a lot about those scenarios, and it just depends on where we ultimately land with the council and with the public on what, exactly what those changes will look like.
Thank you.
Counselor Craig, if I may, thank you very much. I'm really appreciating a discussion about this. And this is a question, this, similarly budget related. And we talked a lot about the resources that are available in the community. So anytime where you're proposing that there could be an additional reason that a property could be condemned, I'm thinking about where are the people going to go? And so there's, use the term operationalize, and I like that very much. Something that I think a lot of people will be concerned about is what is in place if we're putting an additional mechanism for condemnation and displacement on the table? What is in place to get them to permanent housing, not just temporarily, but permanent housing? And we're talking about people with children who are in school. So I think there will be a lot of questions and concern around what we have in place to, to stabilize those, those folks' lives that may be displaced by property that gets condemned due to lead.
Thank you. Thank you for that question. I think that's one of our major concerns in general when we have to condemn a property. And I will say, to clarify, that the proposal is to condemn the property only for kids six and under. So that would be possible that the family can stay in the property even while it's being remediated, as long as the children six and under are able to stay somewhere else. So that may pose a little bit of a benefit to the family while also protecting the child.
And if I may, Counselor Craig, my understanding is, and I don't know what the exact breakdown of the LGH funds, my understanding of the lead hazard remediation program currently on offer by the city for property owners is that some portion of the funds actually exist to do just that. If a remediation project is so large that it requires, you know, essentially encapsulating the whole home and removing the residents from the property, funds exist as it stands to rehouse those persons while, while they are, while they are displaced. And so if we are investing, you know, future, you know, programmatic funds, I imagine and hope that that would continue to be a part of our, sorry, a part of our approach.
And this might also be a good time to introduce Sonya to you, who is not here tonight, but this was another position that was put on hold for some months, and we were finally able to move forward. So, as you all know, as part of our balancing our budget, we delayed hiring of key positions so that we could meet our budget parameters. And one of those was, I forget Sonya's official title, Chris.
It's the Health and Housing Case Manager.
Health and Housing Case Manager. And so she's working with Kim Whistler and is helping to support our housing team in addressing any need for relocation as a results, as a result of whatever issue might be identified as we go out and do our housing inspections. And this has always been this push-pull between doing, holding landlords accountable, and then also not displacing residents. And so that Health and Housing Case Manager is going to be helping to fill that, that gap and, and providing support in a way that we've never had before outside of a Millersville student. And so we had run this pilot, I think that was in 2019. It was very successful. And so Sonya has joined the team, and we'll make sure to get a bio out to you about Sonya, and make sure that you have her contact information as well. But we're really excited to have her on board, and I believe this is her second week.
As I hear the discussions this evening, I'm glad we're having them as a continuation that we started several years ago. How are non rental units going to be managed under the changes of the ordinance? How do they impact what you're trying to do? Because there are properties within the city that are not rental units, that are homeowners, that may be slipping through the cracks. So, but when inspectors go out, how do, how do those individuals fall into the, the program and, and the scope of investigations and treatment of homes?
So I can start with that, and then I'll kick it over. One, one major point is that our systematic inspections do not cover owner occupied structures. And so just out of the gate, there's a large number of properties that never receive an internal structural assessment or even a review as part of a systematic inspection. We have just completed a review of all properties across the city, a condition analysis that we did during COVID when we weren't able to go inside properties. And that has helped us to identify some homes that we need to follow up on. In addition, folks that live in their homes are eligible to receive funding from the city to help remediate, and we may be notified of those homes if a child is in that home and has an elevated blood lead level. And so this is another piece of good news to report to council, which is that after months, if not years, of requests from the Department of Health to share data related to elevated blood lead levels, we're now embarking on an MOU for data sharing between the Department of Health and the city of Lancaster. And so Craig, Walt, did a, and Rebecca did a deep dive in looking at the 2019 reportable data that showed that the city of Lancaster was actually only being notified 30%, for 30% of the total cases. There was like 90-some cases of children being identified with an elevated blood lead level. Only 30% of those were being reported to the city, which meant that there were 60 homes that were not remediated. We don't know what happened with those homes. They may have privately gone ahead and done something to address lead in those homes. But we do know that there was a child with an elevated blood lead level. And we go to those homes whether they are rented, rented or owner occupied. And so unfortunately, that's a little bit of waiting until a child has already been identified. But if there is concern about a house, there are resources that are available, and the Penn Medicine LGH does not have, has different income guidelines and restrictions than through the HUD program. So there are opportunities to address owner occupied properties. If there's anything else you want to add?
Yes, through our program and through the LGH program, owner occupied properties are eligible to receive the grant funds for remediation. I'll also say that to the budget question, that we don't have currently any enforcement mechanisms in homeownership other than complaint based, so we, and external. So we do not go into those properties, as the mayor said. So as we were looking at budget implications and overall implications, that we do not have current mechanisms that we can plug into for homeownership, monitoring of Lead Safe certifications. And so we were looking at homes, rental homes, and as we've looked at the overall bureau, we have started to build efficiencies in the bureau. And as President Smith Waddell said, moving to the two-year rental license and aligning those things should be able to absorb most of the work related to collecting the Lead Safe certifications there, and through that inspector, be able to absorb the additional inspections as well. That's our projection at the moment. Of course, as we go along and see the number of houses, that may change with time. But at the moment, we were trying to address the most number of houses with the resources that we currently had or are almost funded entirely at this point.
Thank you. Forgive me for not knowing, but do the children get tested in school?
No, there's no mandatory lead, blood testing that is required in Pennsylvania. And that is something that, there is a statewide coalition that has that as one of their advocacy objectives as it relates to elevated blood lead level testing, but it is not required.
So the, the children that are, that currently or have been having higher blood levels than normal, how are we identifying them? How are they being identified?
Kim, do you want to answer that?
Yes, those referrals come through the physicians to us. And it also goes to clinical health, and they plan to do an environmental investigation of the entire house, and we need to see those results as well. If relations involved, it's almost an immediate response from the physician to easy. And that's the process, the environmental investigation.
Thank you. So by the time, by the time you're, what I hear you saying is by the time you're notified, the children are already immersed in lead to the point where they have to see a doctor. So it would seem to, I mean, it would seem to me that we should be able to do something that would have more children tested so that we could get in front of the problem instead of coming in in the middle?
And testing is definitely an important strategy, Counselor Craig. I think, though, one thing that we've all identified is that testing is not, we're not going to get out of this through testing, and that we need to take, we need to take a dual approach, that yes, testing needs to continue, but at the same time, we know that our housing stock is of a certain age. We know that the condition and the maintenance of those, of properties, especially as it relates to paint over time, can deteriorate. And that's why the lead inspection certification is necessary every two years, because that's what we understand in terms of a best practice of, in terms of maintaining and wear and tear on a property. And so it does need to be, we'd like to see more testing, but we know that we have to fix the root of the problem, and that is the house that the child is living in.
Absolutely. I, I mean, I would agree with you, Mayor.
Yeah, it's, Counselor Craig, it's, it's definitely been a priority for, for us as well. That, that's why there has been a concerted effort to make sure that we have a complete data set. The mayor mentioned before that we weren't getting a complete data set through the standard process when it was reported by the physicians up to the state. There's also a question of how quickly we're getting that data. So I think through this MOU, we can improve our performance in that regard. I also don't have all the details tonight, but my understanding is that the investment that LGH is making in their lead program is not just remediation, the type of work that we're doing, but some of that money will be going to additional testing as well. I just don't know the details about how they're going to roll that out or advocate for. for additional testing. But it remains an important, remains an important part of the whole puzzle.
Thank you.
If I may, Counselor Craig. First, thank you both for the presentation and the information prior to the ordinance coming. I really appreciate the discussion and being able to contribute to it, so thank you for that. I think the second thing is, you know, one of the things that I've identified as gaps when talking to landlords and being a landlord myself as well is the communication or the education around different expectations or requirements from the city. A lot of landlords aren't aware that these are requirements or the expectation until there's an inspector there and they're required to do so. Are there any plans, especially with these new initiatives rolling out, to communicating to landlords beforehand what these expectations are? And I guess, long-term, have we thought about, thought about a more, I guess, broader process to educate landlords specifically around the licensing process? So when you get licensed, is there a certification process or educational framework that a landlord can learn about what to take to create quality housing in the city rather than it coming on the back end? So I think, you know, just thinking about ways to be preventative or more proactive around the expectations of the city would be really beneficial and get ahead of a lot of these issues that we see come before us.
Yes, and yes, yes. We're working currently on our internal processes and then developing checklists and being able to make our website more robust to be able to provide additional information, both around the ordinance changes, but more broadly, how often we do systematic inspections and what can be expected at that time. So completely agree and appreciate your insight and feedback.
I will add that your LeadSafe team is doing an awesome job with outreach and educating. So I think that's a great standard to follow across all aspects of housing. They've been doing a really great job in communicating their efforts, so just for props.
Thank you. Yes, we're trying to raise the bar, but your point is well-taken with respect to the communication and education. We actually had a meeting this morning with our communications team and with Millsy, our Director of Neighborhood Engagement. And to be perfectly frank, we have a lot of ideas, but we still have to pin down exactly what that's going to look like over the next month and a half. I know that the mayor has actually spoken to a couple of the largest landlords just to start testing the waters with respect to the ideas, but we do need to get the information out more broadly. And this is really just the first step tonight, but we need to do it in a way that is, that is consistent and that reaches as many landlords during this window of time that we're considering the legislation. So I appreciate that very well, State.
And I'll also add, also for tenants as well, because there's a lot of tenants that don't quite know their rights. And I know Tenfold does a great job in providing tenant education or tenant rights education. So I think there's a possibility, or I think there's a lot of potential for a win-win situation with landlord and tenants to provide affordable and quality housing. So, but thank you for your efforts, for sure.
That's what Craig made.
Absolutely, Counselor Soto.
Just to refresh my memory, of all the rental units that we have in the city, what is the rotation for inspections on each unit? If there is one now.
So it was every four years, and then COVID happened. And so the last several months, we've been trying to catch up, and we are caught up. Is that right, Rebecca?
We're caught up with homes that had not been inspected for five or more years. So there were some that had fallen through the cracks. So we're caught up with all the ones that had not been inspected for the past five years.
And so this would make a change, because as we all know, there are property owners that do a better or worse job of maintaining. And there are, to Counselor Royo's point, some landlords who are more or less aware and some who play the system and require us to come out and tell them what they already know that they need to do. So there's a lot of variety. There's a lot of really good landlords in the City of Lancaster, and I think you find us talking a lot more about the ones that aren't so great.
I understand.
But as, as we know, there are many, many people who rent in the City of Lancaster, and it is supposed to be a four-year cycle. This would change, we would be adopting standard operating procedures for how we determine the frequency in which we are going into an inspected property, as Rebecca indicated, somewhere between two and six years. And that would be based on, based on data of previous inspections and findings from those inspections to determine if we're going to go back out and see them longer than four years or less than four years.
And do you feel that once you're fully operational with all the staff, that number will change?
What number?
The two, the three, the four, the six years.
I mean, I don't know. It's, it's really hard to say, because there are landlords who are continuing to invest in their properties over time, and then there are landlords that aren't.
Yeah, they're in for the money, we know.
And so it really does depend, you know? And when I see condemnations come across my desk, which aren't often, but we are condemning, you know, there was a property that came across my desk today. The owner of that property doesn't live in the City of Lancaster. They do live in the county, but you have to wonder, like, have they driven by lately? Do they know what the condition is inside the house? You know, what's actually going on there?
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you. I'm just concerned that, my main concern and the hope is then is the duration of inspections with the amount of rental properties that we have. Yes, I understand and I accept. On a scale of one to 10, you have tens, nines, and then you have the twos and threes. Or zeros.
Yeah.
But I would like to see the reduction in time spent between inspections on some of these homes. I really would. And that's my one and priority concern, right?
Yeah. Counselor Soto, that's our goal, too. I think that the four-year cycle has mostly served us well, but I have that same concern about that set of properties we need to be touching more than every four years. We haven't mentioned our housing inspectors yet tonight, and I just wanted to give them a shout out. They're, they're a terrific team, and they also have really, really good on-the-ground knowledge. Rebecca's been working with them very closely, and she had shared with me just recently that based upon their knowledge over many years of being in these homes, they estimate that probably about 15% of the rental properties need, we need to see them more often. So just as a, and this is not a commitment right now, but just, I think it's a helpful question to just sort of gauge where we might be, that if 15% of those properties in total, maybe more in the two-year, every-two-year realm.
And we are looking to build efficiency in the department rather than adding staff, and we think that is possible with the changes that we're looking at right now. So we're hoping to build efficiency, take away work that does not add value to the overall outcomes, so we have more time to do the work that does add to the overall outcomes.
Thank you. That's all I have, Counselor Craig.
Thank you.
Counselor Craig?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry. So you've laid out a timeline for next steps leading up to a potential vote on proposed changes to ordinances. Have there been discussion or thoughts yet, and I think that this will come up through engagement, of the ramp-up? So if these proposed changes, if we so choose to make them, there will be, one, a rush on lead-safe certifications all at once, and there will be some time needed, especially when I'm thinking about things like the Housing Authority and the daycare centers that were never considered in the ordinance originally. Is there a ramp-up period being considered, or what the timeframe might be to actually get these changes in place?
So we are proposing to start the two-year rental license process in January of 2023 and spread out all of our rental properties throughout 2023 equally or about equally throughout the months of 2023. So giving everyone an opportunity to get the lead-safe certification over 2022 and also working very closely on the rollout with both the Housing Authority and with daycare centers specifically about their timelines. Additionally, working with our lead program and the LGH lead program and how quickly we could get properties, you know, work on the mitigation aspects. And so I think that's one of the big questions right now, is what is the community capacity, both privately for contractors? There is a list of about 300 lead risk assessors in the state that are willing to, that are certified to do the lead risk assessment. So we, early on, now in the engagement process, will speak with contractors as a group individually. And LGH and the city have both been very proactive in building the workforce, but continue to acknowledge that that is a key element over the course of 2022 to make sure that we do have that capacity. But that would be the, that would be the ideal rollout at the moment, is starting with January of 2023 and doing 1/12 of the rental properties each month of 2023. So between one and two years to roll out.
Questions from Council still? Go ahead.
No.
You're done? Okay. Questions, we'll take questions from the public. Thank you, go ahead. Yeah, you want to go up so we can hear you? It's good to see you, Tim.
Hi, guys. Tim Stulter on behalf of One United Lancaster, your local community news resource. Sure, and I guess I'm mumbling.
Thank you.
So first of all, regarding the scope of the expansion, I believe you said right at the top of the presentation, there are 10,700 eligible rental properties?
Approximately, yes.
Okay. How many currently have kids under six? In other words, what is our starting point roughly in terms of number of inspections?
Roughly 1,500.
Okay. So we'd be going from roughly 1,500 to 10,700?
Correct. Additionally, we have a mitigated lead in some additional properties besides the ones that have kids six and under living in them. So that's a, there may be a few more as well.
Okay. And did I hear the mayor correctly that there's typically about 90 kids diagnosed with elevated blood lead levels in a given year?
Yeah, I think, I think she said there was a, there were a total of 90.
There were 94 in 2019.
94 in 2019?
Yes.
Okay. And did I understand that in 2023, if this proposal goes through, all 10,700 would be inspected that year?
So the inspections are not concurrent with the rental licensing process. So the rental licensing process would happen in 2023. The systematic rental inspections will continue to happen over the four-year cycle, and those are not necessarily happening in the same year at the same time. The lead-safe certification will come with the rental license starting in 2023. So landlords will have all of 2022 to get the lead-safe certification, which is good for two years, and they will have to show proof at the time of their registering for their rental license in 2023.
Okay. Who provides a lead-safe certification? Is this these 300-some state, you said there were 300?
There are about 300 in the state that are certified assessors.
Okay. Is the expectation that in most cases, the landlord would be able to apply to either the LGH program or the HUD program for remediation?
Many will be eligible.
Okay. Is the, pardon me, is remediation permanent, or is remediation typically only temporary?
That's a good question. It is not permanent. There is, we do not certify, houses are not certified as lead-free but lead-safe, and that certification comes for two years. So they would need to be retested in two years, and depending on wear and tear, it could last much longer than that, or it could be, you know, no longer lead-safe prior to the expiration, depending on the wear and tear, depending on how you bump in, you know, if someone's chewing on the windowsill or bumping against the walls. That will really depend on when it is no longer lead-safe.
So is the expectation, then, that this would be in perpetuity, that this would not sunset?
One, one thing I would add, this is a really interesting question about how long the lead remediation lasts. We're actually partnering with Dr. Okatch at Franklin &amp; Marshall to, they actually earned a grant to study just this question. But we anticipate in most cases that lead remediation is going to last much longer than two years, but it, as Rebecca said, it really depends on the particular context.
I think that's all for the moment. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions from the public? Thank you. Step up to the mic.
Thank you. I don't have a question, but Rebecca, I'm Bob May, Lancaster EMS, and we've been doing, going into homes for a couple of years now with our community paramedics.
Yes.
Perhaps we could partner?
Yes.
We've been doing lead levels through Gateway and Mary Health and some other pairs. So maybe we could bring our silos together? So I'll give you a card.
Please, I'll give you my card.
Thank you. Are there any further questions from the public? Having none, thank you so much for your presentation. I'm sure we'll have many more.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We'll wrap it up, Council President.
Thank you, Counselor Craig, and thank you again to the, to the CPED team, and thank you for coming out and forth. We appreciate it. Next, we'll move to the Finance Committee. Counselor Bakay.
Thank you very much, Council President. Tonight, there are two presentations on our agenda. The first is from Lancaster EMS, so we'll be hearing back from Bob. Wherever you're more comfortable, if you'd like to sit and use the microphone there or stand and use the microphone, as long as there is a microphone there and you're soft and you're speaking into it, we're good. Thank you very much.
Bob, just make sure you're on and it's as close to you as possible.
Okay. I'm not going to cover everything on these slides, because there's a lot of information, but please, please take a few minutes and read through it when you have an opportunity. Thank you again for your time this evening. So I'm here to ask for a significant increase in public safety support, and I'll come back around to that in just a few minutes. And Bernie will do my slides for me? Okay. So it's important that the council members know that we are a private nonprofit. We came out of the hospitals 25 years ago by hospitals community, if you remember that hospital, and St. Joe's, and then LGs became part of us. We're not owned, and we get no funding support whatsoever from any of the hospitals or health systems. Next slide, Bernie. All right, thank you, Bernie. So this is our carburetor. Now, there's two levels of responses. There's advanced and there's basic. This is our advanced level care. This is the highest security. This is life-threatening dispatches, what we call Class 1. This is our response area, and you can see we do cover the City of Lancaster. Next slide, Bernie? Sure. This is our basic level, so this is Class 2s and 3s. These are non-life-threatening responses, but they're still 911 calls. All right, Bernie? So this is specific to the City of Lancaster. You can see since 1997, when Lancaster EMS spun out of the hospitals, and when our call volume has been for 911 calls, we had a dip during the pandemic. And while we think that is good, it wasn't good for our patients, because a lot of our patients decided not to call 911. So while the volume went down, the acuity went up. So we had a dramatic increase in cardiac arrest DOAs as well as strokes. People were waiting till last minute to call for an ambulance, and that's a dangerous situation to be in. So we try to put some public messaging out that never hesitate to call 911. Now, post, well, we're not post-pandemic, but where we are today, our numbers are going to be higher than what they were before the pandemic started. So we're doing about 30 responses a day in the City of Lancaster, and half of those are the highest acuity. And then the top right, you can see the H just And then the top right, you can see the age distribution for the city of Lancaster. The highest is the 45 to 64. All right, Bernie? So this drills down into the data as far as the type of calls for, that are in the city. So a sick person, we see that with all 22 municipalities that we cover, sick person, fall injuries is usually at the top. But what's unique about the city of Lancaster is that we have overdoses at number five or six, and psychiatric emergencies are at number four. This has been going up from year to year since the last 10 years. I can remember a day when psychiatric emergencies were down about 20 on the list, and we're, it's certainly in the top 10. There is a serious problem, and it's about every fourth or fifth call that we respond on. And there's nothing else on this slide I want to cover. You have some historical data there as well. All right, Bernie? So our revenue sources, we are fee-for-service. And our municipal support, as I had mentioned, we cover actually 21 municipalities. Some support us and some don't. But when you look at that in aggregate, it's 1.6% of our total budget. Our residential subscriptions that we send out, our average return is about 15%. In the city of Lancaster, it's, it's 2%. Again, that's just under 4% of our total revenue. And then there's other revenue equalling about, about 2%. So moving to the right side, the write-offs, almost $8 million in contractual allowance. And this is confusing for some, but what this is, and let's use, let's use Medicaid, for example. So we, we bill Medicaid for a response, a medical 911 response. Medicaid pays us a fixed cost. It's in the $180 range, and our bill might be $500. So the 320 that we write off is written off to contractual allowance. So it's a fixed rate of pay, what we get from Medicaid and Medicare. And for both Medicaid and Medicare, the cost to provide the service is not covered by the reimbursement rate. This is a national problem, and it's putting ambulances out of service. So for the city, 76% of our calls that we respond on, we don't cover the cost to provide the service. Our fixed cost to pull the ambulances outside, you know, put the bay door up and pull that truck out, that's $425 on average, fixed cost. So on reimbursement for Medicaid is 180, and Medicare is about 220. Three-quarters of the calls that we run in the city of Lancaster, we don't cover our cost to provide the service. And you can only sustain that for so long. Specific to the city, we collect 34 cents on every dollar that we bill. All right, Bernie, next slide? This is the historical support from the city of Lancaster. Prior to 2003, we got no support. It started with 20,000. As you can see, it got to 150 for the last five years. All right, Bernie? This is the support per residence. So support per resident is about $2.50 for the last five years. All right, Bernie? Okay, so this is a list of the municipalities, and the first column is who supports, with how much of the support is, is provided to us. And then the next column is support per 911 call, and then per resident. And then the fourth column is utilization. Our highest utilization is in the city, so 18% of Lancaster City residents call for an ambulance in 2019. And then in that collection, per municipality. All right, Bernie? So my ask from the city is, is a considerable increase, and it's, it, it needs to get higher. I'm asking all the municipalities, and you can see what I'm asking for, what they're currently providing and what I'm asking for. We need $700,000, well, actually, we need $850,000 going forward. And the reason we need that is we need to increase our wages. An EMT starts at $15 an hour. A paramedic starts at $21 an hour. I need to get to $19 an hour for EMTs and $25 an hour for the paramedics. That's going to cost 100, I'm sorry, $850, $850,000. We're going to put 150,000 of our own money, and we're going to start pulling from savings to help fund this. I'm asking in aggregate, all the municipalities to come up with $700,000. And I think the fairest way to ask is based on utilization of services. So I came up with the, the 327, $327,000 based on the fact that we run about 47% of our calls in the city. 47% of 700,000 gets us to that number. I would like that for the next two years, starting next year, and then with a 2% increase going forward. All right, next slide, Bernie? This is what I'm asking from, this was sent to the mayor earlier this week, $327,000 in Y. Next slide, please? Next slide, Bernie? So there is an EMS crisis. It's, it's national. We've, we're certainly seeing it in the Commonwealth. We've lost 200 annual services in the last eight years across, across the state. No one wants to do this work anymore. They can certainly have less stress. They can certainly have less work, less risk, and they can make more money doing other things, particularly the last year with, you know, rudder sheets and so forth, you know, increasing their hourly rates. It is no longer career, it is a career track in and a career track out. Our average tenure is about five years now. 10 years ago, it was 20 years. We're just not keeping our employees anymore. There is significant post-traumatic stress that we're dealing with. The suicide rate for pre-hospital across the country has gone up to double digits over the last two years. There is, in my opinion, no longer a tolerance for municipalities that don't support. And by that, we're not going to be around if, if all the municipalities that's, that are covered by EMS don't step up and support their annual service. I've been to the county commissioners. They, they say it is a municipal, municipal local problem. When I go out and present to the municipalities, they say it's a county problem, and EMS is caught in the crossfire, and we're not going to be around if this doesn't get resolved. There is some long-term solutions potentially. One that I'm working on is EMS authority with another annual service. There are six EMS authorities in the state right now. I'm learning more about how they operate, more to come on that once I get more information. Next slide, Bernie? All right, and that's, and then the next slide, Bernie, I think is just the city code, but I'm sure you're familiar with that. So I know my ask is double compared to what it's been in the last five years. We, we have to have an increase, and this is the message I'm taking to all the municipalities. There are some that don't support us at all. Everybody wants EMS, but no one seems to want to pay for it, substantially pay for it. And in the meantime, annual services are going out of business. So we are not immune to that. The hospitals will not step in and save us. That will not happen. They can't under the Stark Law. They can't incentivize by, by way of support, and that's how Medicare would interpret that, so they can't give us any money. We have to get our wages up, and if we don't, I'm going to continue to lose staff. I'm going to 20% vacancy rate. 10, 15 years ago, there was a 20% waitlist to get into the system. Now it's a vacancy list. And we can't continue to do business if I have 20% vacancy rate, and, and that means trucks out of service, trucks, ambulances out of service. When ambulances go out of service, response times go up. And we pride ourselves on the city of Lancaster as a CAS accredited, as a, as a credited annual service, only one in the county, by the way, only one in the state. We pride ourselves that we can be, from dispatch to the door of the residents, 8 minutes, 59 seconds, 90% of the time. That is the gold standard, and we, and we meet that 89% of the time for the city of Lancaster. Those numbers will not continue. So response times will, will go down as we start taking trucks out of service because we don't have staff. So I've come before you for many years, ever since, you know, even in early years of Charlie Smithgall, and often got a no. But this, this year is different. This year's different because if we don't get an increase in support, we have to make some hard decisions. If you take that out to the extreme, the city's going to have to provide you an annual service, whether that's through City Fire. I estimate it'll cost you $6 million a year if you turn things over to City Fire. I'm asking for $327,000. It's not a threat. Don't, don't, don't misread this. I'm just, I'm just, this cold, hard reality is what, what's happening with EMS. We are in a collapse. It's no longer a crisis, it's a collapse. We're not going out of service next week, but the sign is on the wall. If we don't get support from municipalities, we will not exist. So, sorry for the tough messaging, but I think it's important as municipal leaders, you know where we are. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Bob. I just have one quick question before I open it up to the committee and the rest of council. You had mentioned, I, I, I was having trouble hearing you there. You mentioned the savings, so that you have this sort of $700,000 shortfall. Can you just repeat what you were mentioning about dipping into the savings of Lancaster EMS? What's been the approach so far?
So today, we don't have a shortfall. What we want to do going forward, and my staff doesn't know this yet, but I, I want to do a significant pay increase for them, which will help my retention and recruitment. And that's, that's $4 for EMTs and $4 for paramedics, which is going to cost me 850. So we do have reserves. You know, every, I think every healthy nonprofit and for-profit business has reserves. You have savings. But we're at a point now where we're going to start looking at tapping into that interest income to help fund a significant increase for my employees. We're not looking at any changes to benefits. We don't have a pension. We're not, we, we want to get to commensurate level wages that career police and career fire have, and we don't have that. We are non-unionized. We, we, we've had a few attempts, but we, we do remain non-unionized. So I don't know if I answered your question?
No, you did. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
I'll, yeah, I'll go, go ahead, Counselor O'Callaghan, please, no.
I'm sorry. I believe you had mentioned if the city were to turn to fire and police, it would cost a certain amount. Could you repeat that number? I think I missed that.
As far as, I didn't catch your question, but you're asking about how I came up with the number if, if City Fire took over?
Correct, yeah, was it?
So I just, our budget's 12, 12.5 is what our budget is. I just took that in half because 48% of our calls are in the city. I just divided it in half. Now, I did run numbers. Mayor Smithgall, back in the day, asked me to prepare a budget, what it would cost if the city would take it over, and it was 4 million then. And that was, that was when, when he was in office here. So I just took my 12.5 and divided it in half. Now, you know, could you do it in less than 6 million? Probably, but you, you won't have the same level of responses. That 8 minutes, 59 seconds would become 12 minutes, 15 minutes, and so forth. The higher that response rate goes, the more DOAs there will be. You know, the more, you know, negative outcomes there will be.
And I'm not sure if you've done this presentation to the other townships and boroughs yet, but what's been the feedback from other townships and municipalities?
Across the board, I've had some say, yes, we need to do something. I have some that said, it's not my problem, it's a county problem. I've had some say, your business, figure it out. So it's been across the board. I've met with six of them so far, and I'm, I'm getting everybody. And you can see on the list who gives and who doesn't. And there's some token giving that is, oh, you know, we support, but okay, $2,500 isn't going to do it. That covers two calls that are, that end up in bad debt. See, we have at-ready costs. We're paying employees even though we're not running calls. So if I have a truck that's sitting for 12 hours, we're paying a salary, and they're not out trying to generate revenue. But when the payer doesn't even come close to what it costs, the at-ready cost at 4.25, that can't be sustained. And we've been trying to sustain that for 25 years and been doing well at it, very good at it. But the day has come where we can't, we, we just, we're running out of solutions other than having municipal government have some skin in the game.
And just one more question, and maybe I'm missing it, but does the county contribute to any?
I'm sorry?
Does the county contribute at all?
The county does not contribute, and they will not contribute. They, they, I have met with Josh Parsons. He was on my board for a couple of years. Incidentally, Patrick Hopkins is on my board, on, on our board. So Josh Parsons knows the challenges in detail because he's attended board meetings, and I have presented. However, he is steadfast. He said, this is not a county problem. This is a local problem.
Well, just a comment. I think it's a shame that you have to travel to a couple dozen municipalities to, to seek additional funding. I do think this is a county issue, and anything that we can do to advocate on the county level as well to at least get some contribution, I think council should support that. But yeah, I do think this is a county-wide issue, for sure.
Sure. What, what, Commissioner Parsons has offered over the last couple of years is if, there could be some soft funds to help, like $10,000 here and there to help fund grants, consultants, startup costs if we merge with another entity. There's 14 annual services in Lancaster County. We are the largest, but we're all private nonprofits, and there's only one that's truly all volunteer left. All the rest have, have career staff. But Commissioner Parsons is pretty specific. When I have had conversations with him, and he also, in meetings with the mayor, did say that this is not a county problem. He doesn't want to support, he doesn't feel that county funding should go toward EMS or, or fire, you know, for that, you know, for that matter. It is a local jurisdiction. His rationale, I, you know, I suspect, he'd share that with you if you asked him? I don't want to speak for him.
Thank you. That's all I have, Counselor Bakay.
Thank you, Counselor O'Callaghan. Anyone else? These conversations will continue as we head into budget season, so I really appreciate you coming out this evening.
Thank you.
Conceptualizing this for us. Thank you.
Thanks for coming up, Bob.
All right. The next item on the Finance Committee agenda is the Lancaster Public Library. I have it electronically, and we do have it on the screens here. I appreciate you doing. He could make it easier for himself, but he chooses not to.
As ever.
Yes. Thank you. That, no, that's just fine. And just make sure that you have that mic nice and close. Welcome, thank you. I think, make sure that red light's on.
Thank you very much for inviting Lancaster Public Library. I'm Melissa Holland. I am the Executive Director. I was named Executive Director three days before March 13th, 2020. So it's been a pandemic-type of administration, but we are thrilled that we are open again and people are coming in. As you may, oh, I should also say, I have a little library corner over there with board members, staff members, and friends. So they came to support, and they will probably answer questions if you have them after the presentation. The library is one of the oldest organizations in Lancaster. It was born in 1759. The next slide, please? The Lancaster Public Library inspires, empowers, and strengthens our community by connecting people with information, ideas, and enriching experiences. By providing equitable access to vital educational resources, exceptional programming, and community-building opportunities, the Lancaster Public Library is recognized as a dynamic center of knowledge and a cornerstone of a thriving Lancaster community. That is our mission and our vision that we live by every day. We are thrilled to announce that 41% of your residents in the city of Lancaster own a library card. That's over 24,500 residents in the city who come to the library. And in 2019, they borrowed over 300,000 pieces of materials, which equated to about $5 million. worth of materials, according to the American Library Association's Library Value Calculator. They got all of that material free of cost at Lancaster Public Library. Our collection is one of the most robust collections of all the public libraries here in Lancaster County. We have over 192,000 pieces of materials, and that includes an extensive collection of electronic resources, which includes eBooks, e-read, or e-audiobooks, and streaming of movies, music, print material, as well as audiobooks. It is a state mandate that 12% of every library's operating costs are spent on collection development. Lancaster Public Library is one of the only libraries here in the county that actually does it. We will spend roughly $200,000 this year on buying materials for, to be lent to both our patrons as well as around the county. Because of our robust collection and the depth of our collection, it is borrowed by libraries throughout the county for their patrons. We have a small, and when I say small, I truly mean it, 21 staff members for both our location here in the city and in Mountville. That includes our back office staff and our facility staff. We may be small, but we are mighty, and we have the largest number of staff members who have gone back to school to get the graduate degree in Masters of Library Science. Last year, our reference librarians answered over 2,000 reference questions. Next slide. Some people say, ugh, public library, third dinosaur. You don't need them, nobody uses them. You have Google, why do you do it? Only old folk who can't use computers must go to the library. Well, the numbers tell a different story. As you will see, 70% of our patrons are baby boomers. Over 78% of our patrons are considered in the millennial or in a younger group of patrons. The library is a thriving organization for all ages. Even our silent generation, which is our youngest patrons, make up 4% of our total patron numbers. And that's because many of them don't even have library cards yet. You cannot get a library card in Lancaster County until you are five, and many parents, for the ease of the family, just keep one family card. Next slide, please. I venture to say that we are the only organization in the city that provides services from the time you are born to the time you die. We are a full service for all ages. We provide equitable access to information, resources, and community-building opportunities, no matter gender, age, socioeconomic background, educational background, or any other ways you want to measure people. Everybody is welcomed equally at Lancaster Public Library. And our collection goes beyond your grandmother's thoughts of books when you come to the library. Yes, we have books, we have audiobooks, we have movies, we have music, but we have a whole lot more. For instance, we have the Duke Street Business Center, where anyone can come, an entrepreneur or anyone else who is looking to start a new business or to give their business a boost, and they can get a variety of information, only able to be gotten at Lancaster Public Library for free. We also have one of the first autism resource centers ever put into a library. We have a very robust Lancaster historical collection. We provide hotspots so that patrons can be connected with the internet, no matter where they are. As I said before, we have a lot of e-resources, and in 2020, we gained, we grew that collection. 21% of our collection budget went to e-resources. Although the library was closed, we were open 24 hours a day via the internet. We also have a variety of programs for the very youngest to the very oldest. And beyond what you think may be in the library, you can come and you too can get an American Girl doll, you can get a cake pan, you can get outdoor lawn game or tabletop game, or you can get a variety of instruments, including desktop harp that was handmade here in Lancaster County, and ukuleles. You can start your own little band if you want to. Next slide, please. As I said, we do it with a very small skeletal staff, and we are the most frugal people you will ever meet. I think this chart really shows the kind of funding that we have compared to the national scene. As you will see, the national funding by local government is $37.62 per capita. Lancaster Public Library, and just Lancaster Public, not all the libraries in the county, our annual, our per capita funding is $1.49. Statewide, nationally, it's $3.02. Lancaster Public Library, it's $1.92. Federal is pretty close, 12 cents versus zero. So where does our funding come from? It comes from our own generation of it. Nationally, libraries generate $3.14 per capita. Lancaster generates $4.77. And if that doesn't put a fine point on it, these state numbers may. There are about 450 public libraries in the state of Pennsylvania. Lancaster Public is rated fourth in generating revenue. We are only behind the big boys of the Free Library of Philadelphia and Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh and York. And I venture to say, when they get the newest numbers, we will be number three. Up until now, York had a contract with the School District of York to provide library services. That contract, which was very profitable for the library, has gone away. So I assume we will, Lancaster Public Library will be ranked as number three. Our library has the largest service area and materials. We serve over 40% of Lancaster County. In Lancaster alone, we have the largest service area, and for the state, we are ranked eighth. We are ranked 28th in operating expenditures and 99th in total local funding. We're a busy library that does a lot. But what is really shocking, I think, is that we are ranked 429th per staff versus per capita. Again, I can't stress enough that we have a mighty small staff for the amount of work that we do. But what is even more upsetting is that out of 450 libraries in Pennsylvania, Lancaster Public Library is ranked 439th in local funding per capita. Yes, we're rated 99th in total local funding, but per capita, we are ranked at the very bottom. In 2019, we raised 58% of what we needed for our annual operating budget. That's one of the lower years. We tend to raise about 64% a year for our operating budget. But as we look forward, and as you all know, we are very excited to look at our future and the fact that we will be the anchor in the Christian Street parking garage in Yule And that our timeline started last year, quarter three, when we finally kicked off our quiet phase of our capital campaign. In next year, in 2022, we are hoping to be given the shell so that we can begin construction. We will be given the shell early in 2022, with the beginning of construction of our shell, second quarter of 2022, and that's when we will go public with our capital campaign, and hope to complete construction by the end of the year, with a ribbon cutting in the first quarter of 2023. We thank the city for the support you have given us for helping push the library to be an anchor in our new home, and for the support you will be giving us as we go into and continue our capital campaign. We are not taking any of our operating budget for our capital campaign. It is coming from donors, some who are already donors to the library and know the importance of the library and give to our annual operating budget campaign, and increasing their giving. We also have some very new people who realize that a thriving city must have a thriving library and a modern library and an open space library, which our new library will be. And they are giving generously. We also are finding as many grants as possible, and we are teaming with the city. You will be our support in the RACB. We have applied for a $2.5 million RACB, and will be applying for a $750,000 Keystone Grant, which is library-specific grant. And for both of them, we will be partnering with you, the city, to administer this. So we are thrilled with what is going to happen. But until then, and even when we move, as we look forward, we realize that in order to continue doing what we do and serve the city equitably, everyone is treated equitably at the library. We need continued support from all of the municipalities and communities with whom we, in which we work. So, thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much. I'll take any questions or comments from members of the committee or council. Councilor Orio.
Just a comment. Just wanted to say thank you, Melissa, for your leadership over the last, I guess, two years now. I know it's been a trying time for the library and for many organizations, so to kind of, I'm looking forward to the move and all the exciting things that you and the public library is going to bring to the city. So just wanted to say thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Do any of my members want, any of the trustees want to speak? Don't win anything.
Thanks for having me. Happy to answer.
Moral support.
Counselor Baker?
Please.
Melissa, was there, forgive me for being naive, was there a specific number request for our upcoming budget attached to this evening's presentation?
Well, because I would just want to be the face of the library, I will leave that to one of my trustees.
President, thank you for asking. I was really hoping somebody would. So obviously, I'm sure, you know, you all are juggling a lot of considerations, which we've heard this evening. And as you enter those discussions, our hope, after displaying how much value the LPL really brings to the city and the county, we're asking for your renewed commitment and support, and hopefully, your pledge of $2.25 per capita, which would amount essentially to 150K. That's the ask.
And where were we in the two previous years?
I don't have the two previous years. I do have the one previous. Do you have both? They're the same?
Yeah.
Last year, it was 100K.
Okay.
It came down to about $1.60 per capita. So we're asking for 250.
The state recommends a $5 per capita. So what we're asking is that we go a little closer to that $5.
Thank you.
As a follow-up question to that, just out of curiosity, does, you have a Mountville location, a branch location. Does Mountville provide any support? Okay.
Oh, yes.
Would you please, would you share?
Mountville is the only municipality that does meet the $5 per capita.
Great.
Also, West Hemfield and East Hemfield play into that. They give more money than Mountville, but per capita.
Sure.
It's less than that, too.
Excellent. Thank you.
We have 14 municipalities. We do have two that provide nothing, but most of them provide something.
Counselor Baker, may I? Just a follow-up question, and I know you mentioned it earlier, but how much money did the county ever supply the Lancaster City Public Library? And what is their main reason for saying, let the municipalities contribute a percentage?
That's a wonderful question, and there are many staff members who still do not understand it, and people that work in the county that don't understand it. We have a very, I think, unusual system, that we have 14 independent libraries here in Lancaster County, meaning we all have our own policies and our own boards and our own financial statements. And overseeing the back office is the library system of Lancaster County. The county's money goes directly to them, and they divide it up. We don't get a choice to say, we don't need this service, this service, or this service. It's not a cafeteria plan. They get the money, and then through their services, they divide up a little bit of that money so that we actually get some finances in our hand. But most of the $1.3 million was their last budget from the county, goes directly to them. Their, what they get from the county is more than what our budget is. We have a $1.2 million budget.
So out of that $1.8 million, you don't see a dime of that. Is that what I'm hearing?
Just, I would have to get back to you with the amount, but no, not very much of that. We get it through services and what they provide.
Okay. Could you please give me more information on that, please?
You have to.
Thank you. That's all I have, Counselor Baker.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Council President, that concludes the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Counselor Baker, and thank you to the library team for coming out and presenting this evening. Next, we have the Public Works Committee. Counselor Soto.
Thank you, Council President. At this time, I bring the Public Works Committee to order. We have one item on the agenda, and that is a discussion on amended streets and sidewalk ordinance. And I believe Mr. Campbell will be presiding over the discussion
Sorry.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be able to describe to you some changes that we're, that we're proposing for the street cleaning and street sweeping regulations. Over the last year or so, especially during the snow cleaning period, there were a number of challenges that we discovered. I'm not quite sure why that is, recording all of my text, but, all of my words, but very good, I guess. We learned, we learned a number of things in terms of how the ordinance supported what we were trying to do, but how the ordinance sometimes ran counter to what we were trying to do. So we've taken the opportunity to look at the ordinance and propose a few changes. So of course, the purpose, the problem that we're asking to solve is to try to make sure that the streets are as clean as possible, and especially given the challenges we had during, during snow periods, how do we clean the streets clearly and more effectively directly after a major snowfall, especially when we had three snow emergencies this past year? We also want to make sure that the streets are clean for passage, for just regular passage, and for the operation of the city, and to be able as quickly as possible to liberate parking spaces quickly after such a snow emergency. We're also looking at the opportunity to take the existing parking period or opposite side of the street parking period as an opportunity to do some select repairs in the public right-of-way, which hopefully will provide less inconvenience to parking for individuals in the city. So some of the current regulations that stymie us are regulations being silent on when and how to resume cleaning after snow emergency. There's clarity about when to start it, when to stop it, but you have that period directly after snow where are we going to aggressively clear the cars for parking reasons or not? There are restrictions in parking for opposite side needs, opposite side of the street, and it needs clarity about how it gets implemented. Right now, that particular guidance suggests that even in a narrow street, you can put your car on the, in the travel lane, waiting for a street sweeper to go by, and unfortunately, you could obstruct ongoing traffic in the current regulations, and we, of course, cannot have that. We need to be able to expand the street cleaning to include maintenance for snow, for cleaning, for repairs, for tree pruning, et cetera, and there are a couple of things where we need to codify basic practices to be not exceptions so that we don't have to have a special edict every time we need to do something relatively minor in the, in the public right-of-way. So many of you are familiar with how things work during snow emergencies. During the snow emergency, the, the snow emergency routes are cleared from curb to curb. There is no parking during the snow emergency, and what you see to the right is the basic map of snow emergency routes. There are some minor adjustments to that. Cars during a snow emergency, cars are allowed to be in the public, in the Lancaster public parking for free or otherwise off the road, and parking lanes in the snow emergency routes are cleared as the route is cleared curb to curb. When the snow emergency ends, right now, parking on the snow emergency routes is already clear. So when people, when the parking, when the snow emergency ends and people need to get their cars out of the garages, in principle, they can bring their cars to the cleared parking lanes within the snow emergency area. But historically, we've played a bit of a dance about the rest of the parking and the rest of the streets. There are often the complaints of why should I expect to be moving my car when there's still a lot of snow in the street? So I didn't move my car, why are you ticketing me? Or how can I expect that you would automatically go to street cleaning if that has not been declared specifically? And that's part of the vagueness in the current regulation as well. What we've discovered during the course of this past, past winter season is that our team is very well-enabled to be able to go immediately from snow emergency directly into parking lane cleaning and street cleaning, and we, we want the ordinances to be able to allow for that without major problems. So our proposal is clear, is to clear the streets quickly and message better to the public. The sooner we clear the parking lanes, the sooner the city and those whom we serve get back to normal operations. From the moment the snow emergency is over, from that moment, we need to be able to be clearing parking lanes to be able to get more parking available to the public so that we can get back to normal as quickly as possible. The current regulations, as I stated, are unclear about when to start clearing, and we've, in the past, had as many as several days between the end of a snow emergency and the start of clearing, which means that that's several days delay of trying to get the city back to normal. The parking regulations, as I mentioned, are very clear about when a snow emergency begins. It's very clear about when a snow emergency ends, but it's not clear about what is expected directly thereafter. Now, I do want to say that the regulations do not prohibit some of the more proactive and forward-looking things that we did this past winter, but it does not readily support it naturally. So we're, we're kind of being a bit dicey about how we, we are effective in that particular area. So what we want to be able to do is make it clear to the public and make it clear in the regulations that street cleaning days, that we understand without snow, are also the days that we would be doing snow clearance in the parking lanes, and that would start immediately after a snow emergency ends. So our proposal is to utilize those cleaning days as parking lane cleaning days. We will use street cleaning days to clean the parking lanes, which means that on day one, as soon as the, the snow emergency is lifted, you've got parking available in the, in the snow emergency lanes, in the snow emergency streets, and the very following day, clearing would start in the parking lanes of that particulars, of the next particular zone. So if you are in a zone that has street cleaning on a Wednesday and the snow emergency has been lifted on Tuesday evening, the hope and the expectation is that you would move your car from the street cleaning zone in, for your Wednesday cleaning, so that we can clear the parking lanes in that window of time on the street cleaning day. There are a couple of challenges with that, which I will speak to, but I do want to show as a quick example what our, what our, what our experience over the last three winters has been. So keeping in mind that before this past winter, there was one snow emergency in 2018. There were no snow emergencies in 2019, but there were three snow emergencies this past winter in 2020. As you can see, the number of cars towed this past year is about, in, in one snow event, was a little bit, about half of what was towed in the snow emergency in 2018, and what was ticketed is even less than half than what was ticketed in that snow emergency of 2018 as well. The second snow emergency of 2020, the numbers went down even further, including ticketing going down to about half. And then the third snow emergency, which was February 18th, 19th, the numbers went down even more drastically, 54 towed and 60 ticketed. Now, that may have been because people started to get used to the idea that we meant what we were saying, they've got used to the way that we were doing the clearance of the streets, et cetera, but we're seeing this as, as progress, and I think part of the reason is we had more proactive messaging about what we were going to do and how we were going to do it, both by social media, by the police, and by door-to-door hanging, knocking and door hangers if necessary. There was consistent enforcement, and there were, as, although Mike, we were looking for alternatives to removing the vehicle, we didn't provide alternatives during this past winter, but those are some of the things we'd like to be able to consider as we go forward now. So we discovered that what we think was a success of sorts, no one likes to be towed, no one likes to be inconvenienced by, by snow, et cetera, but because the numbers were so much drastically lower than in previous years, we think that these are opportunities to do several things, to extend our snow emergency until snowfall ends. So one of the things we did was, instead of declaring end of snow emergency and snow is still coming down, we generally tried to wait till snow ended so that it was predictable. We also extended snow emergency until the snow emergency routes were fully clear curb to curb, which is not necessarily something that has always been done consistently in the past. Very active messaging so that it was clear when the snow emergency was ending, what the announcement was, including clarity about enforcement, including a message that snow removal in parking lanes commences immediately after lifting the snow emergency, which means that about, within eight days, all parking lanes can be clear after a snow emergency. Ongoing snow removal continues throughout the city through a variety of, of conventional Challenges, of course, where to park. Just as with regular street cleaning, the ordinance allows that, the current ordinance allows that once the parking lane is cleared, you can park in the parking lane. So everyone, many people are familiar with the practice of people waiting for the street sweeper to go by and then being able to park directly in their space, in the, the parking space. It is allowed, for the most part, by the regulation, but it is, it is, usually it is by exception, and we're suggesting and proposing that that is something that can continue, but with a caveat that I'll come to in a moment. Also, during snow emergencies, parking authority facilities do provide parking spaces for, for cars. During the height of the January, which is the second snow emergency last year, the parking garages were at two-thirds capacity, which meant there were approximately 1,200 spaces still available. Now, the parking garages are not always convenient to all communities, but they do provide some relief during a snow emergency. And so some options to consider, as we did at the beginning of COVID last year, were to look to the, to the not-for-profit organizations, the churches and the church parking lots, and seeing if we can negotiate or find ways that more of those spaces can be made available, especially in the first two or three days directly after a snow emergency, where parking is at a premium and you'd have to dig yourself out of mountains of snow to be able to find a place to, to park. So that addresses the primary goals of street cleaning, cleaning in a conventional sense and during snow. But the secondary goal of, of the, of addressing the, the, the regulations is to provide time and space for road, water and sewer, utility, urban tree, and other maintenance in the public right-of-way. So at this particular moment, when we have special needs to do renovation work or do repairs, et cetera, we generally carve out time that is not necessarily aligned with the regular opposite side of the street parking days to do everything from tree pruning to other kinds of repairs and utilities. We want to encourage and, in some cases, actually require that as much of that work as possible be done during the time that people are already moving their cars, so that instead of being inconvenienced two, three, four times, they would ideally be inconvenienced only the once when you're moving your car anyway. The second part of trying to make such a thing happen is that it allows us to try to get back on a regular maintenance and operations track in terms of pruning, certain kinds of repair work, and to set a different set of expectations for our utilities about how to work with the city of Lancaster. So in, in the current practice, after a sweeper goes by, whether the limited parking window has expired or not, people return to their vehicles, return their vehicles to the, to the now swept lane. We would want to continue that, however, the city often needs the entire window for maintenance or repair. That window is anywhere from three to six hours, depending on the location and the difficulty, but what we are committing and what we want in the, recognizing the ordinance is that when the city needs the full window, we will put up temporary signage to that effect, so that you would know that on today, you'd have the, the SOC sign or a temporary sign that goes up saying, we are using the entire opposite side of the street parking window for street maintenance or for street operations. The site, because you are already moving your car, that signage might not go up a full 24 hours ahead because you're required to move your car anyway, but it would include signage for utility work, tree pruning, et cetera, and the public would be made aware of the times indicated on the notice, and if we say that we're going to be out of there by 2:00 in the afternoon, we will stop doing any, any further maintenance work at 2:00 that afternoon. So I don't want to take too much time, there's a little bit of a snip here, which is two minutes, just a mini interview with, with some of our staff about what they do on a regular basis, but most of you, if you walk or regularly utilize the streets of the city of Lancaster, you're familiar with, with our guys. They're out there, they're, most of the time, I'm hoping, they're friendly and they, they make themselves available as you need to. But the kind of signage, this is not a wordsmithed sign, but the kind of signage that we would have on those occasions would move on and use the entire opposite side of the street parking duration would be something like this, the no parking rules are in full effect because DPW maintenance work is underway. So we're hoping to be able to come back to you, we, we want to hear your comments and any comments from the public about concerns about how to do this, but we would like to be able to come back to you in October with the proposed relatively minor changes to the regulations. In the sense of good governance, we've combed a lot of the regulations related to street maintenance and street clearing so that they're made consistent, not only amongst themselves, but consistent with the way we want to be able to take care of the streets, hopefully to the betterment, and as our, our tagline says, being dedicated to your quality of life. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. I do have a couple of questions, you know, we'll sure have a lot more. What happens to those vehicles? There are vehicles or individuals who will leave their cars on that street, non-emergency areas, for two to three to even a week, buried in snow. Wouldn't that hinder you continuing to clean that parking, that parking area once the main road is cleared, and how would you handle that? Would those cars be told? Would they be notified that they're coming through? How would that be, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, it's a very good question, and we've, we've taken on that challenge two or three times already. Generally speaking, if it is not the day for the clearance of that row of parking lanes, they would, they would be either left there, or if they are creating some sort of a hindrance, we would try to reach out to the owner. We, we partner with the police and with the parking authority to try to identify the owners if a car is staying in one place much too long. Otherwise, they will be ticketed first, and if they become a hindrance to a, if they were a hindrance to a And if they become a hindrance to a, if they were a hindrance to a to a, a snow emergency lane, they would be towed. Generally speaking, unless it's a hindrance to something else, we don't tow the cars that remain where they are. They may get multiple tickets if it's multiple days that they remain.
I tell, have there any questions or comments from the rest of the council? We'll start with the committee first, then we'll move to council.
If I may, Councilor Soto.
Certainly, Mr. Councilor Roy.
Just, just curious about the full window opportunity. How does the department typically identify needs that are needed on that block? So if there's tree pruning that's needed, if there's any maintenance work, how is that identified beforehand?
So thank you very, very much for that question. We have been understaffed during the COVID period. And so there's a lot of ongoing maintenance that we would ordinarily want to do that has been deferred or has been not attended to. Partly, we have had lack of staff. Some, in some cases, we have, we have for our tree pruning group, two of the four pruners are on family medical leave. So we are needing to find ways of providing regular attendance to the tree pruning needs. Some of the ability to see clearly going up and down a street is contingent upon limbs that are too low or too, too big or broken or whatever. And we want to be able to have a regular schedule for these things being attended to, whether we hire outside contractors or not. At this particular moment, we have not had the ability nor seen yet the, I don't want to say the word need because we definitely see the need, to to force a schedule. What this would allow us to do is say, every quadrant needs to be able to have had tree attendant, trees attended to each two to three weeks. And so over a six to 12-week period, all quadrants should have been able to be attended to. And those would, since we have eight parking zones, they would be scheduled during those parking, opposite side of the street parking zones. And they would go regularly around the course of the city. And that would allow us to schedule separately our, our subject matter experts who are on call to answer tree pruning questions, whether it's in the public sector or the private sector. The same type of thing would happen with street maintenance, with some of the green infrastructure maintenance, et cetera. So there's a number of things that I am not happy that we have not been able to attend to at the level that I would like that can start to be addressed by having a regular schedule that falls in line with when the the parking lanes are available.
Thank you.
Councilor Craig.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell, has the, has the outline for this been done anywhere else?
When you say the outline for this?
So, you know, like where, have there been other cities that have used the same guidelines?
Yes. In fact, most of the cities that I'm familiar with require that you not return to the parking lane until after the period of the, the opposite side of the street period. So if you have a period from 10:00 in the morning till 3:00 in the afternoon, you can get ticketed if you show, if you bring your car back to the site before then. We're not proposing to do that. At this particular moment, parking is at such a premium in the City of Lancaster. And if we know that the only thing that's going to happen on that street is clearing the snow or sweeping the street, we're fine with the idea that people return to their, to the parking space after we have gone through. But that's why we want to be able to reserve the opportunity or the option that if we know we're going to do maintenance or if UGI or PPL or whatever needs time on a particular stretch of block, that they can use the time that's already carved out in our ordinances as much as possible. If it becomes the case sometime in our future that we are better staffed and the, and the demand from the public is such that we want, they want a higher level of operations and maintenance, I would very much be proposing, and I'm not proposing it now, I'd be very much proposing that we go to a system very similar to other cities where the entire window be made available. But at this time, we are not proposing that. We're sensitive and recognizing how the parking situation in the City of Lancaster currently is and want to let them know that if we're only sweeping, you can return immediately. If we, if we need that space or that time to do other things, we will let you know by putting signs up on that street.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions from council or comments? Do we have any questions from the public?
Just one quick question. You mentioned in passing the idea of enlisting churches and nonprofits as potential parking spaces in the case of snow emergencies. I think in the past year or so, the city has a couple of times put, you know, like a list on the city website. Is that the sort of thing you're imagining or something more elaborate or more formal than that?
So we had some mixed responses with that. We had approximately 18 organizations that are throughout all quadrants of the city that offered up parking lots in the early days of COVID. I genuinely believe that it is part of, within the spirit of Lancastrian conduct, that many might still be willing to make such an offer, especially in those one or two days directly after a heavy snow, to make some of their spaces available, especially if they're already clearing their parking lots. However, this is something that will need to take a lot more effort. As some of you may know, we are upgrading our Adopt a Block program to an Adopt It program. More to come as we further develop that. But that is increasing the level of volunteerism. And many organizations are stepping up, saying, if there's a need that the city needs fulfilled, we are willing to do that. We give them training. It's often covered, paid for under the Keep Pennsylvania Beautiful program so that there are, there's equipment that can be made available, including, we believe, snow shovels, et cetera, to be able to to assist, for instance, a snow angels program. But I think to your point, we do need to reach out to a lot of these organizations and possibly either develop a, some sort of a memorandum of understanding or some sort of a gentle person's agreement about what might be available in those two or three days directly after a heavy snow, especially in those areas where people will not have the ability to get themselves dug out after a heavy snow.
Do we have any other questions from the public? Okay, I guess at this time, unless there's any more of the comments from council or Mr. Campbell, Public Voice Committee is closed.
Thank you, Councilor Soto. We'll go then to the Economic Development Committee. Councilor Roy.
Thank you, Council President. We have one item on our agenda today, Administration Resolution Number 522021, Extending the Term of the Lancaster Industrial Development Authority. I believe we have Director Delft here to speak to that resolution.
Thank you, Councilor Roy. And good evening, everyone, again. I will share a summary of the resolution that is before council tonight. This, this resolution that is proposed is a procedural amendment related to the Lancaster Industrial Development Authority. For those of you who may not be familiar with LIDA, I'll say a few words about LIDA. It was established in 1971 to act as a liaison for securing tax-free loans or tax-exempt financing for industrial and commercial development in Lancaster County. So this is an institution that serves not, not just the city, but the county as well. The organizations that are eligible for the tax-free financing have to meet certain charitable organization status as defined by the IRS. Typically, in the past, we see projects that come before LIDA that are nonprofit organizations or businesses that have a nonprofit arm. The resolution that is before us tonight is essentially to extend the term of the Lancaster Industrial Development Authority. This amendment was proposed by the LIDA Board. And if adopted by council, it will amend the Articles of Incorporation to increase that term of existence for the authority from 2046 to 2070. You may ask, why are we bringing a resolution to council that terminates in 2070? This is as a result of a particular project that has come before LIDA and sought financing from that authority. We've talked about this project in the past. It's the Landis on, Landis Homes on King Project, which you may remember is a residential project with commercial on the ground floor. It's a total of 79 units, serving the middle-income bracket. And then seven of those units, we've helped to finance seven low-income units through other programs. The project is a total of $85 million. And Landis on King is using LIDA as one part of their financing for that particular project. The loan or the bonds that they are seeking actually terminate after the end of the existence of LIDA, which is currently 2046. So in order to make sure that the project can move forward within the bounds of LIDA, we have to extend the LIDA term. So that's why we're here before you tonight. And happy to answer any other questions or if I need to do any more research with LIDA Board itself, I'm happy to follow up with them. But as I said, at the end of the day, this is really just about the term of existence for the authority.
Great. Thank you, Director Delft. Not only am I pleased with the discussion tonight, but you're bringing ordinances decades in advance to us, so that's awesome. I don't have any questions, if there's any for the committee or council as a whole. Any questions from the public? With that, I will motion to move Resolution 522021 to full council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With that, Council President, that concludes the economic development agenda.
Thank you very much, Councilor. Finally, that brings us to the last section in our legislative agenda for the committee meeting, which is looking at two resolutions on the committee of the whole, which I will now open. First, we have Council Resolution Number 502021, Recognizing, sorry, Recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month, which begins on September 15th and ends on, on October 15th. I believe we have a draft resolution. And I'm open, of course, to any discussion from members of council. But I think it's a well-established fact that the City of Lancaster, that about 40% of our residents are persons of Latinx or Hispanic descent and speak a variety of languages, come of a variety of places, but are united in the fact that they are the driving force behind much of Lancaster's progress over the last several decades. And of course, prominent in every industry and sector. And so this is an opportunity to recognize all of those contributions and the incredible role that persons of Latinx descent play, not only frankly in this city, but on this council. So that's, that's the spirit in which we have Council Resolution Number 502021 this evening.
If I may, Council President? Just a quick comment. I know we'll, you know, with the, with us voting, we'll be able to talk more about it. But I just think the importance of this resolution, especially in the age of the pandemic, is super important to recognize the essential workers of Hispanic descent that have really kept the workforce and a lot of vital services throughout our county in operation. I think a lot about the privilege I've had of working mostly remote during this time. And when I read through the draft of the resolution that talked about most of the essential workers or a lot of the essential workers being of the Latinx community, made me think about a lot of my friends and family that didn't have that benefit, including my parents, my in-laws, and a lot of aunts and uncles that had to be on the front line during this pandemic. So very special that I think we're moving this forward in light of the circumstances that we are. So, thank you.
Any other council comments? Any comments from the public? Okay, hearing none, I will hear a motion to move this forward to our next meeting of full council.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I did that by acclamation without telling you, Mr. Harris. My apologies.
He got it.
I should ask aloud, any nays in that case? Cool. All right. That brings us to Council Resolution Number 512021, Recognizing Welcoming Cities Week. So this, sorry, this resolution in short would recognize welcoming week in the City of Lancaster and would celebrate the city's designation as a welcoming city by the National Welcoming America Initiative. I think it was my first year on council, maybe my second, when we heard a proposal, when we were asked by Church World Services to participate in the process of becoming a recognized welcoming city for our, especially given the significant portion of our neighbors who are members of the immigrant and refugee community. And as frankly, those communities in particular have been under fairly vicious public attack that is very much in contrast with the welcome that we value here in Lancaster, I think that this is also timely and important. Council comments?
Council President?
Please.
I would also say that it's timely and important just based on the crisis that we're seeing coming out of Afghanistan. We know that there are refugees that are coming into our state. We know that, you know, while we don't know exactly where they may be going, in the long run, our history of welcome here is important. And I think that we should reaffirm that in this time.
Council President, I, I support this resolution so strongly. It's, there's really no more I could say. It's always been a welcome in cities since the first day I put my foot stepped on the sidewalks of the city. Granted, there were times where, as always, you run into situations or individuals that are going to hate no matter what they hate. But this city has always been a welcoming city. And sure, the most important example of that is look at the minorities and the amount of cities that come from different cultures and, and different beliefs that are in this city. I can't say more than that.
Thank you, Councilor Soto. Any other council comments? From the public? Oh, I should also mention, because I realize I didn't say this aloud, I believe the week in question identified in the ordinance, I want to say it's coming, it's the 10th forward, and I tabbed away from it. Mr. Harris, do you know off the top of your head?
Mr. President, I believe it is September 10th.
Yes, I'm seeing here that it's September 10th to, to?
19th.
To the 19th. Thank you very much.
And Mr. President, if I can interject, there will also be a, there is a presentation planned for the September 14th meeting regarding this resolution.
Excellent. Thank you. Did I ask for comments from the public? Sorry, y'all. Great. Great. In that case, I'll hear a motion.
Motion to move this to full council on September 14th.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Harris?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Royo?
Aye.
Ms. Bakke?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeau.
Aye. That concludes the agenda for the evening, other than Mr. Harris's clerk's report. Mr. Harris?
If I could make a request, Council President, I realize that on the agenda, I had not had noted a approval of the minutes from the August 24th committee meeting. I was hoping to get that approved also.
The special meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Per the law, the governor recently signed at the state level, is that, that's not an action that would require prior advertisement?
I do not believe so, no.
Okay. In that case, this was the special meeting of the Community Planning Committee?
Yes, it was.
In that case, councilors, if one of you would be so kind as to offer a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous month's August 24th, is that correct, Mr. Harris?
Yes, Mr. President.
Community planning special committee meeting. I'd be very appreciative.
Motion to approve the meeting, the minutes for the meeting, the special meeting on August 24th.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Council comments? From the public? Typically, I don't ask for that, but I don't know why I did. Just have it. Anyway, all right, hearing none. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Royo?
Aye.
Ms. Bakke?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeau.
Aye. All right.
For your indulgence.
Thank you. Your clerk's report, Mr. Harris?
Yes, Mr. President. So some of the things I've done in the last month, I prepared the Hispanic Heritage Month and Welcoming Week resolutions, which you reviewed this evening. I wrote a cover letter and sent out the fireworks repeal letter to the state legislators as directed. I researched nuisance bars in Lancaster over the last two decades for the mayor and council president. I researched housing law for the council president, supplied a copy of the city's COVID-19 construction ordinance and subsequent repeal ordinance to the school district at their request. I made the arrangements for this evening's meeting with lens in the public library. I arranged the special committee meeting, of which we just passed minutes. I resolved conflicts and coordinated the scheduling of several meetings in this room. And on behalf of this lister, I organized and hosted a virtual meeting concerning changes in the state open meetings law. I attended the parking authority meeting, and I did other things.
Yes, you did. Thank you very much. That is, that concludes our agenda for this evening. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.